Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here. First item on the agenda tonight is the minutes of the January 15, 2019 council meeting. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the minutes of the January 15 council meeting are in your packet and presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review them? Are there any corrections, revisions, or...
They look good.
If not, they are none, I would entertain a resolution for approval.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the minutes from the January 15, 2019 city council regular meeting.
Second?
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
My legal staff. Next is a presentation of the U.S. flag flown over the U.S. Capitol to Fort Morgan Police Department for Outstanding Community Policing Program. Dusty Johnson from Ken Buck's office.
Yeah, thank you so much for making time tonight so we can recognize the Fort Morgan Department of Police. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Ken Buck, who is not here. He is back in DC for House session, trying to get something done. So, on behalf of the Congressman, it is our office's honor to present a flag that was flown over the U.S. Capitol. Thank you so much for your department and your leadership, for all the safety and precautions you give to the city, going over beyond in your duties, and also your amazing community service and engagement, such as Coffee with a Cop, which is a great way to start a Monday if you haven't gone and you like coffee, or McDonald's. And here is a letter with an official certificate saying the flag has been flown over the Capitol.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dusty, I just want to thank you for this and I want to thank Congressman Buck.
This is part of our efforts, as I think everyone here knows in the audience and certainly City Council and Mayor, that we are a community policing, police department. We focus on that. In 2018, we contacted 1,000 more people in Fort Morgan than we did in 2017 through our community policing outreach programs, numerous ones, especially Coffee with a Cop. That's a 28% increase in one year, as far as outreach goes. And I think that is what has contributed tremendously to our reduction in crime. Crime is now down 8% from last year. And in 2017, we were recognized as the 19th safest city in Colorado. We are now recognized as the 16th safest city in Colorado, and we will not give up till we're in the top 10. So again, Dusty, thank you very much and thank Congressman Buck, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Good job, Chief.
Thank you.
Next is setting a date for a work session on the city complex project and for council budget retreat. Mr. Wells, Mr. Brennan?
Well, I'll let John get into the specific dates that we're thinking about, but it's that time again. It's time to start getting the budget ready and looking at 2020 and the short-term and long-term planning for projects in the city of Fort Morgan. And so every year, as part of our process, we do a retreat with council. So we need to set a date for the budget retreat for council. And another issue that we're looking at having a work session with council on is the complex design. We have gone through the process of, I guess, choosing a design architecture firm to do that design and focus primarily on the field house, but we also want to sit down with council, make sure that everybody's on the same page with the direction that we're going and make sure that we're meeting all of the expectations of council. So we'd like to set up a meeting where we would just have a single topic to discuss, which would be the complex and then our retreat. So, John, I know we looked at a couple of dates that you wanted, that we were thinking about throwing out there.
Yeah, we thought about off Tuesday nights, because that's usually already a free night for most of the council. So we could look at the two remaining free Tuesday nights in February, which would be the 12th and/or the 26th, or possibly a Thursday evening in February. This is for the work session. We want to try and accomplish that first before we get to the budget retreat. So that would, we wouldn't want to do it two days from now, but on February 14th, 21st, or 28th.
14th be Valentine's Day. I wouldn't, I think that would probably be a good idea.
Okay, 21st or 28th.
So Tuesday's not an option, or Tuesdays are an option?
Tuesdays are an option. The 12th or 26th.
The 12th is bad for me, but the 26th or either of those Thursdays are good. I can't make the 12th.
12th would be bad for me, too. Actually, just today, set up a meeting in Denver. So I'll be out of town on the 12th, but 26th would work, as would the 21st or the 28th. 28th works best for me.
I can do the 26th or the 28th. Let's do a book.
I can't be here on the 28th. Sorry.
It was looking so good for the 28th.
What about the 26th?
Make it work, make it work.
Let's split it and do the 27th.
Okay.
Not Wednesday.
Does the 26th work?
It works for me.
Works for me.
Clint, would that work for you, 26th?
Bang the gavel, Mayor, 26th.
All right, 26th it is.
For Ron.
For the work session. Now, for the...
For the council.
For the other one, we were looking at the first free Tuesday in March, so March 12th hopefully will work.
What time will those be at?
The work session will be here.
Four o'clock.
What time?
What time?
Oh, probably six, unless the council wanted to do it at a different time.
What did you say about the 12th of March?
That would be what we're shooting for, for the council budget priorities retreat. And that would be off-site. The work session would be here.
Then you can do the 12th, too, as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Does that work for everyone?
What date's that?
It's a Tuesday. It's the second Tuesday.
I've got to go another month.
Okay, that's easy.
So that will be the 12th?
March 12th.
Both of them start at 6:00 PM?
And we don't have a location yet determined?
No, not for the retreat. Probably a local hotel, but we don't know which one yet.
Okay, and then six o'clock still?
Yep.
I think so, yeah. We have started the retreats earlier. Sometimes if you guys wanted to start it at five or something, we could do that.
Fine by me. I don't know what your, how it works for you, Clint, Kevin, or Dan.
I'll be late.
No, unacceptable.
Is there a date five? Could you be there, Doug?
No, I could get off at five. I could be a little late.
Earlier is always better.
Yep.
So we want to start at five o'clock on the 12th. We usually start with dinner and that'd give Doug some time to get there and...
Same as, same for the complex meeting? Are we saying five for both meetings?
I think we should say six for the city complex.
Okay.
I think that's a hot topic right now.
Yeah, so we'll stay at six for that and let's do 5:30 on the budget retreat.
Okay.
That way we can have... Okay, so the budget retreat is the 12th of March at 5:30. To be determined, location. Complex is going to be 2/26/19 at 6:00 PM here at 8:00 CH.
Right.
And that works with everybody?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is presentation of possible action on naming the West Gallery of the Fort Morgan Museum after longtime Heritage Foundation President Don Oswalt. Councilman Lindell?
Yeah, this is brought up at Heritage Foundation. Don Oswalt is retiring after, I forget how many years, they said, at least 14 years on the Heritage Foundation. When you talk to the members of the Heritage Foundation, they say that the drive that went on to raise the $400,000 to build the addition for the museum would not have gotten done without Don Oswalt. So, in memory, and he's really, I've been impressed by his diligence and dedication to the Heritage Foundation when I've been to their meetings and everything. And so, suggestion was, was to name the West Gallery after Don Oswalt in honor of his retirement. And it was voted on at the last thing and approved unanimously there. So now I bring it to council for us to approve it.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments regarding this?
Fabulous idea.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea.
He's been an integral part of the community for a lot of years and has served it, served it well. There's no comments or questions. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution naming the West Gallery the Fort Morgan Museum after longtime Heritage Foundation President Don Oswalt.
Second?
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation of possible action to appoint Chris Hobbs to reappoint, and to reappoint Jerry Wathen to the Senior Center Advisory Board. Councilmember Howell?
Thanks, Your Honor. I've had the privilege to serve on the Senior Center Advisory Board and have enjoyed working with all of our friends on that board. It's time to reappoint Jerry Wathen, and he is a fearless advocate for the aging population, and he wants to serve some more. So we're really excited that he reapplied, and we need him dearly. And then also, we have a new applicant, Chris Hobbs, and she is, yeah, fantastic, lots of great ideas, and she'll add a lot to the board. So I'd like to make a motion, and this has already been unanimously approved in, on that board in a previous meeting. So now we bring it to council for a motion. So I make a motion to reappoint Jerry Wathen and to appoint Chris Hobbs on the Senior Center Advisory Board.
Second?
I have a motion by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is presentation of reappointment of Edie Dolbin and Jack Darnell to the Airport Advisory Board. Mr. Shaver? This was brought forward to the Airport Advisory Board, and both Edie Dobson and Jack Darnell, or Dolbin and Jack Darnell have been members of this advisory board, and the board recommended that they renew their position on the board. So with that, I would entertain a motion to reappoint both Edie and Jack Darnell.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion reappointing Edie Dolbin and Jack Darnell to the Airport Advisory Board.
Second? I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Doug Shasso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. I will let them know. Next is a presentation of possible action to reappoint David Fowler to the Planning Commission. Mr. Glenn Meyer?
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. David has applied to be on our planning commission. Larry Overton is on our commission and is not able to continue in his capacity as a commissioner. So we have an unexpired term to fill tonight, and we're excited to have Dave apply and become a member of our commission. I think he'll be great. He served on the Strictly for Streets Committee and had the opportunity to work with him there, and he was really a great asset to that committee, so I'm excited to have him on our board tonight. So, he is here. If you have any questions for him, I think his application's in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So he's just filling out the remainder of Mr. Overton's term, and then at that point, he would have to be reappointed?
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or none?
I'm not familiar with David Fowler's, which...
David's, yes.
Will the real David Fowler please stand up? Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion appointing David Fowler to the Planning Commission.
Second?
I have a motion by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, and thank you for your service. Next is a presentation of Fort Morgan Culture is United for Progress, grant application for a housing needs assessment and possible action authorizing the city to join in the grant application and funding. Councilmember Howell and FM Cup representatives.
So, do you want me to hang back here? Do you want me to go hang out with Lauren?
You can serve from here.
Great.
Lauren can cover.
So Lauren can be ready to field some questions.
And I do have a couple of committee members with me in the audience. If they want to stand with me, they can, but they are here to represent us.
You can do a model wave from the audience. So in your packet, we included a grant application for, for partial funding for a housing needs assessment, and the leads on this is Fort Morgan Culture is United for Progress. They have, within their organization, they have different teams, and one of the teams is, their whole purpose is just to help make housing more equitable for everyone in Fort Morgan and surrounding areas. And one of the pieces that they found in, in their research is that it's really essential to have a formal needs assessment conducted when you're going after grant funding and when you're asking developers to, yeah, to commit to your locations. So it's kind of a chicken and egg problem. If you have potential employers that are coming and they want to see more housing, but you don't have it yet, you're like, it's okay, we'll, we'll figure it out. And then you go to the builders and you tell the builders, we've got more employers coming, we need you to build houses. And then it's just this kind of funny back and forth motion. So, and I know for the economic development team here at the city of Fort Morgan, they've seen this as a big challenge as well. So I'm really grateful for FM Cup and for their leadership on this issue. So they, as you could read in that grant application, essentially, yeah, so the Colorado Health Foundation has seen this as a, it aligns with their goals for Morgan County. So that's truly just a win-win for us as a city to formally partner with FM Cup in this grant application. Once we have the findings from this needs assessment, we'll be able to formally show it to builders and primary employers about truly what the, you know, pinpoint what the needs are, instead of just saying, yeah, we need housing. Because, yeah, we need housing, but we need something that's more formal. So, and one more comment, this is something that was found as a priority in the comprehensive plan that the city conducted and published in 2016, that we needed to conduct some kind of assessment like this. So, yeah, so that's all I had to say. If you, if Lauren, if you want to touch on any points, then we can open it up for some questions.
Yeah. First, Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you so much for inviting us to appear before you this evening with what we feel is very important work in, throughout the state and in our community as well. I think that housing keeps raising issues for many, many communities, and so we're not alone in that. One thing that I really wanted you to understand about our group, specifically the Housing Work Group and the seven individuals that are teamed with me, we're just, none of us would ever have claimed to be housing experts, exactly the opposite. We are all just residents. Most of my members, my coworkers, English is at least a second language, third language, fourth language. So it has been quite a challenge just for us to start to get educated around the language of housing. And if you've read, and I'm sure you have, your policy, number one, the comprehensive plan, number two, all of the zoning and planning ordinances, it's complicated stuff. And the financing language of housing, and all of that goes with that. So it has just been, I'm very proud of these residents for, they're unpaid generally. They get $20 to attend a two, at least two-hour meeting. So really, it's volunteer work. We've been working together every Saturday for over two years. You know, we have people in this town that are just so committed to making this city just an extraordinary place to live and to work and to raise families. So I would be happy to answer any questions that I'm capable of answering around this needs assessment, if you have any for me.
What is the requirements of the city partnering in this or being, what's the city's role that you're expecting out of this?
Well, I have been at, in several meetings with individuals in front of me and with economic partners in the city. Everybody agrees that housing is an issue. Everybody agrees that money is tight. So we would like to take the lead on this, and we are, by writing this grant, for a total of $60,000. My committee's annual budget is $15,000, but to demonstrate how committed we are to this project, we're putting up $8,200 of our $15,000 budget to make this a current $68,200 project, which would result in a very comprehensive analysis backed up by a lot of research. And we will be reaching out into places that aren't normally reached through general census data and, and surveys. So what, we would like to make what we think and hope is a reasonable and appropriate request to the city to come with an equal amount of $8,200 or in-kind services and expertise and other involvement, and just be solid partners with us. We anticipate that this study will take nine to 12 months, because it is really going to be a full and complete housing inventory and needs assessment. So that's our request this evening for the city.
What kind of in-kind services would you be looking for?
Well, I know personally that there's a lot of experience up here in front of me. So generally, you know, whatever, and I also know that you're responsible for taxpayer dollars. So I know you're not going to, you know, and the budget is tight. So I'm willing to entertain any ideas that you will have. Basically, what we want is just the city to agree to partner with us on this project, so that the end result is something that can be used in the comp plan and guide us for the next decade of, of planning and development for our housing in Fort Morgan. So you, you can lay on me any ideas that you can think of yourselves, that you can come to. If it can't be dollars, then agreeing to sit with us and agreeing to, to meet with the research company and contribute the expertise that you have. And I know that is value, valuable.
How much is the, to do the study, what is the total cost?
Well, I've read a lot of the studies and made some initial calls to some research, research companies. Generally, they run anywhere from $35,000 and up from there to 55, 60. It's really the scope of work that you write into the study will determine exactly how much it will be. But we feel like what we're asking for will provide us with a really in-depth look.
So $16,000?
Sixty, 35 to 75,000.
Well, if you guys are giving 8,200 and you ask the city to match that...
Yeah.
Where's the balance of that money coming?
From the grant that we've requested from the Colorado Health Foundation for 60,000.
So it would be something like 76,000?
Yes, total, yes.
Now, this is, I guess, more of a question for Jeff. Wasn't one of the initiatives this year by the city was to form a housing task force and try to come up with some solutions to this?
Yes, and, yes, it was.
And so are, where are we at with that task force? I mean, it seems like if we have a task force and then we have FM Cup wanting, you know, is that going to be two people working on the same stuff?
I think this is where the partnership is very helpful, from the perspective that, on two levels. First of all, we're trying to get some of these answers as well, to help some of the developers that we're working with. And to answer your question directly with regard to where are we at with that, we're waiting for the new Economic Development Specialist to start here in the next week or so, so that we can get that underway and make sure that we've got continuity with that department in there. So that is underway. But we did budget money for next year to look at ways that we could promote housing in the city, and I think that we probably could take from that money and match, put, throw in a match, or whatever council feels comfortable with, in order to get this done. In order for this study, I think, to be helpful to the city, we need a partner and let whoever's doing the study understand what is necessary for us, because we, we have a lot of different needs. It's not just low-income housing. We have worker housing issues. We don't have enough housing for people that have jobs but aren't low-income. We don't have enough housing for people that are in that starter home and want to upsize to a nicer home. So we really are looking at the entire spectrum of types of housing that we need, and we need to be involved with this study, I think, in order to make sure that the study's useful for all of the needs within the city, and make sure that we don't get off in the weeds on one specific type of housing. And I think that's what Lauren's asking is, you know, can we partner and provide some of our perspectives in the study, as well as... of our perspectives in the study as well as financial? And I think if council is willing to, to do that match or some sort of match, I think we've got that in the budget based upon what the initiative that council funded for this year.
So we, in theory, could match financially, but also provide this, like you were talking about, the experts, expertise, obviously, that we have amongst staff, that we have amongst council, that could be useful.
And I would add, if we received this grant from the Colorado Health Foundation, one of our requirements through our fiscal sponsor would be to put out a request for a proposal with a scope of work. And as a partner in the project, then we would develop the scope of work together. So that way, the city's voice is included as what you're looking for, for long-term development sustainability around housing.
Are there any other partners or is it, would it just be FM Cup and the city of Fort Morgan?
Well, because of the, the timing of the grant, I was really pushed hard. If I had more time, the, the grant is due on the 15th of February. I have sat on a lot of meetings with Cargill, La Prino, RE3, Northern Colorado Medical Center. Nobody wants to step up with the dollars. I do believe if there was some more time, we could encourage more financial commitment. And I'm not stopping asking for that money from, from those people and partnerships, but on this grant, we may not have the time to show them as partners.
Is this going to be a county-wide?
No.
Just for more?
This is, what I think is really incredible about this, we are going to focus in Fort Morgan. And it could be added to a county-wide study, but we really want to focus right here in the city.
So Clint, to answer your question, I think just on paper for this grant deadline, it'll just be for formal, formal partnerships, FM Cup and the city. But in that nine to 12-month period, yeah, all these primary employers and other people will definitely be at the table.
Yeah.
But will they have to pay anything?
Well, they should, but they don't have to. And they do in other ways, I believe. You know, they bring a lot to our city.
And they may be doing things in an in-kind perspective.
Sure, absolutely.
What are the chances of receiving the grant?
I hope good. We want to be optimistic. Grants are always competitive, but Colorado Health Foundation is making very significant investments in Fort Morgan right now. We're one of four communities that they are focused on, and they have quite a bit of money to spend. And this matches up with everything that they have identified as a social determinant of health, of housing. So I think that we are really, you know, have a very good shot at it, and we would know by mid-April of 2019.
And I believe Lauren's group floated the idea to the Health Foundation, the Health Foundation, like encouraged them to apply. So it wasn't, it's not us going fishing.
Right, right.
It's a direct ask for the application. So I think it's, we've got a good chance.
And generally with these kinds of grants, when there's partnerships and other people willing to put money in, it gives you additional points and support when they know that the community is supporting the grant and the, and the project.
And I know Colorado Health has been out, they came out, representative came out and talked to me just about health delivery out here and everything, having been out here for hundreds of years myself practicing medicine. So anyway, like you said, I think where this is something they're offering, I think the partnership. And the other thing I like about it is that making sure that we're not duplicating efforts that somebody had alluded to, you know, that we've got everybody working together synergistically to move things forward rather than everybody working individually and striving towards same goal at a slower pace.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the, one of the main reasons for this is to develop real stats, real data that we can use to entice developers, put housing in the community?
Yeah, I mean, if you have, and I know, again, you've talked to people, like Ally said, everybody knows there's a housing need and we hear numbers and we hear some percentages, but nobody can really pinpoint exactly, you know, are we using 2010 census data? Are we using, you know, just anecdotal information from employees? I think that it's time to nail down through some real numbers so that we can use that to attract developers and for low-income housing tax credits, things like that. You know, we need to be able to substantiate what we're saying, and that kind of data with a reputable company will help us.
And that's where your primary employers, I think, will come in. If they're not stepping up necessarily financially, they can step up and provide internal data that we would not otherwise have access to, saying, we have a workforce of this many, this many are commuting from Greeley, this many are commuting from wherever. Data that you can't get your hands on because it's internal staff data. And I think that may be the avenue you go back to and say, you know, hey, if you're not going to step up with a financial contribution, give us generic, the generic data that, you know, you can provide to the consultants, that will do the study.
Another value of the information from the study is also on a legislative, legislative level, we can use the study to go back and talk to Ken Buck or other individuals and say, hey, you know, one of the big needs that we have in Fort Morgan and I think in other eastern Colorado communities, do it with the state legislature as well, is the need for additional grant or some sort of financing for worker housing. Or we can identify a need that maybe they need to change their guidelines for what low-income housing is based upon the cost of housing. But it's also helpful for legislative decisions and changing policy at the state level when we can go there and show them the evidence that we've collected from a reputable third party to say, look, this really is an issue that we need to address and we need your help. So there's a lot of value to something like this.
You know, for, for 10 years or more, I've been hearing about how housing is a major issue, and there have been a lot of community committees and people from different organizations looking into it, and nothing has ever changed. This, this has been and is a critical issue in our community, and, and I think we very much should be involved and at least match the grant. And if we don't or match what you're putting in for the grant, and if we don't, I think council ought to be looking into funding a study like this ourselves. We have money budgeted for something like this, and we have spent a lot more money on lesser items and lesser issues. And this is huge, and I think we need to do everything that we can to support it.
And again, the last, I just want to add, I'm so really would like you to see the faces of these individuals that I work with who couldn't all be here this evening because some of them are at the other city event going on at the Armory this evening. It has been a lot of personal time and work just to understand, like sit, and I, I'm a native English speaker, right? And I have an English degree and sit down with the ordinances and with the codes and talking about Lytech financing and DOLA and all of these things that don't even translate. And I appreciate that you said that because this represents like some people who are just ordinary folks in the community that live here that aren't getting paid, that want to be a part of like moving this forward. Yeah.
Any other questions for Lauren or? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, a resolution authorizing the city to be listed as a partner in the grant application to the Colorado Health Foundation for Housing Needs Assessment and to match the Fort Morgan Culture United for Progress. Contributions, thank you, at $8,200.
Thank you so much.
We're excited, thanks.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Dan Marler, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Next is a presentation of Fort Morgan Volunteer Fire Department's Annual Report. Chief Brasco.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I've included our annual report in your packet, and I'll just highlight some of the things from it. This year, we had 244 calls in city, in the city limits. That's the same as last year. And outside the city limits, we ran 251, which was only six more than the previous year. So it's been a very consistent year overall. We currently have 33 active members, and we have another application we'll be voting on next, next week. So we're, our numbers are going up. We had a few people move away and, and leave the department, but we've been getting new members on, and we currently have five rookies that are in their first year. So it's, it's really exciting over there. We have a lot of fresh blood and people excited to be there. Thirty-five. Over this past year, we've combined, we've logged almost 3,000 hours of training, combined with everybody in-house and external. The department in 2018 has really come together. We've done a few exciting things. We've added some exercise equipment, and we're really promoting health among the firemen. You can see guys over there working out every day. That's great to see. We've purchased a new rescue truck that'll be here in a couple of months. Our attendance is up, and we're working toward a safer Fort Morgan. And our Assistant Chief, DJ Iker, has been working with the State of Colorado Fire to get training. They're actually going to be down here almost every Tuesday this entire year to do actual training with us. We're actually doing hazmat operations right now. And then in June, August, I believe, we're going to start Firefighter One. This training's all free to us. We just had to pay for books. So it's a, he's really taking the initiative to, to find out what train's available for us. We do this training in-house, but sometimes it's really nice to have a different face come in and presented a different way. So hands off to, hats off to him for what he's done for us. I'm really proud of our department, what we've been doing. I have a great group of officers, and, and the rest of the firemen are very dedicated to, to doing our job. I'd like to recognize the employers of all of our firemen, they, the, how they support us and allow their firemen to, to leave work during working hours and, and go to these calls. And I'll just read off a list of the employers. So we have Poits Farm LLC, Select Energy Services, Veem and Sons Dairy, Sanctuary of Morgan County, Morgan Federal Bank, Morgan Community College, the city of Fort Morgan, Edwards Market, Wickham Tractor Company, TransWest Auto Center, Morgan County Government, Early Toyota East, Weld County Garage, Petzner People, too, La Prino Foods, and Pioneer Elementary School. So I just want to, you know, if you see those employers, say thanks to them because they, they really are supporting us. Do you have any questions for me?
No, but it's nice to see you recognize the, the employers because that is an integral part of our volunteer fire department and the ability to, to maintain it, so.
We've been, it's been discussed, we haven't moved forward with it, but one of the other things to recognize employers is we have a Facebook page, and we're planning on doing write-ups about each employer and, and trying to get that out there, and we're going to, well, as soon as we find somebody who can write a little bit better, somebody who wants to take on that task. But we're, we're planning on doing that because he, because it really is a big part. You know, the, the firemen put their time in there, but a lot of time is taken away from, from your job and you have to make it up later, but, so it's, it is appreciated.
What are the auxiliary hours? You talked about training hours, and then there were auxiliary hours. What are the auxiliary hours?
The auxiliary hours are hours where people go to classes outside of the department. So we have chaplains go to training sessions and conferences. There's all kinds of different training opportunities that the state puts on, and usually they're, they're free to us. It's just, they went to a grain bin extrication class two weeks ago. There's, there's a lot of different trainings around the state that, and we, and the guys, especially this young group, they're really excited about doing the training, and, and that's where they go to those, and we, we count those as auxiliary hours. I will turn it over to the Fire Marshal, John Zink, and he'll talk about his, what he's been doing.
Evening.
Hi.
Mayor Ron Shaver and City Council members. The following document is a 2018 annual report from the Fire Marshal's Office. Fire Prevention Month, along with fire prevention activities. I would like to thank the 11 volunteers that went above and beyond during the Fire Prevention Month. I could not have done it without their support and desire to educate the youth in our community. We effectively completed seven presentations to five public schools, along with that, nine presentations to six private schools totaling 1,320 students, and staff members were contacted this year. Fire extinguisher training presentations presented six classes to Fort Morgan High, Morgan Community College, La Prino Foods, Local Homeschool Group, City of Fort Morgan Staff, and Girl Scouts of America. Approximately 200-plus students were trained. Under fire safety surveys, 180 businesses were inspected with about 75% complacency rate on the first inspection, along with RE3 School District, Colorado Plains Medical Center, nursing homes, group homes, daycares, and counseling center events. Under plan reviews and permit process inspections with the chief building official, 44 plans were reviewed, including the, into the 160 feasibility forms, interviews, inspections, meetings, field inspections during the entire building concept process leading to the final inspection, along with a certificate of occupancy or compliance letter issued by the city of Fort Morgan and the Planning and Zoning Department. The last item is specialty items. Two residents required assistance with smoke detectors and battery installation. And throughout the year, I attended and maintained continuing education that is needed for recertification with the State of Colorado or National Certification Institutes. Primarily, locations were the Fire Marshal of Colorado's organization with their bimonthly training and the International Code Council Conference and webinars that are offered online. Respectfully submitted, John Zink, your Fire Marshal. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good job. You're not going to stay for the rest? Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider a request for a variance for setbacks in the total lot area requirements at 912 West Bijou Avenue. This is a public hearing, and please keep public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit comments to a time of three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questions that are repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and set a time limit on duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons that have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this public hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on January 18th.
Next is a presentation of the application. Mr. Geimeyer.
All right, good evening. This has been an interesting one for our department. This parcel of land was purchased in 2014 by a gentleman who purchased it to use for rental income. There's a couple of buildings, houses on this parcel. Subsequently, he's decided to sell one of those homes, and it was determined through that process that this lot had been subdivided back in 1997. It was really just through a deed in a simple survey that was recorded with the Morgan County Clerk and Recorder's Office. We didn't know anything about that at the time or until we started this land sale process. We spent a lot of time internally just trying to figure out how to help these folks do what they wanted to do, really just sell this property and yet protect everybody that would be involved. We've had good success with the Realtor and the title company. Jason's been really helpful on this issue. And I think the best way we could come up with to protect everybody and yet still have this proceed was to ask for this proceed was to ask for some variances to several non-conforming issues that it creates having a non-conforming lot. So we're here tonight. The applicant has applied for variances to lesser setbacks on all of the structures. None of the structures would meet any of the setbacks at this point for both lots, as well as lesser lot sizes that would be required in this zoning district. Neither lot would meet those minimum requirements the way that it's, in fact, you couldn't subdivide this lot in today's world at all and have anything meet, really. So the applicant applied for those variances. We've reviewed that. I think this is a classic case for variance tonight. The new owner had no idea that this had occurred and really is just trying to protect their interest. I think this is the best way to make this happen. We've published this and received no comments to our office for or against the application. So we would recommend that the council would, acting as the zoning board of appeals, approve this case, which would allow for lesser setbacks and lesser minimum lot areas as required by the code. We'd recommend these conditions if you approve that tonight, that the variance would run in perpetuity with the land so that this could maintain forever. And we had an improvement location certificate completed by a surveyor. We'd asked that any structures, should they burn down or be demolished and want to be rebuilt, that those structures would have to be reconstructed exactly as they appeared on that improvement location certificate. That way, we don't cause any further setback issues or lot issues with these two lots. And I think we can work with the Realtor and actually have that document recorded with the sale so that we have that in place for the future. Those would be the two conditions that we'd ask for tonight if you approve this. So Kent's here, Kent Lindell, the applicant's representative. He may have some comments, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
And if I could add into the record in reviewing this, if council does nothing with this application, these lots still don't conform. So that's kind of the pickle we were in. You don't want to create or allow the subdivision, which would create issues with the code, but by leaving it, there's a whole different set of issues. Both of these homes have different meters for electric, which is required by the code. If we say that the subdivision isn't valid, now we're violating a different part of the code. So I just wanted to clarify it all around. This is a sticky issue and this is hopefully the best solution.
So do both lots have, since they've been subdivided, have their own utilities, sewer, water taps?
They do. Yep. Sewers were separated some time ago. Both structures were on one sewer at one point, but they've been separated since and everything else is separated at this point. So they have two separate addresses.
Your ability to find these is very great.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dan. I remember Jason saying once that I have a canny knack for finding where things in the code as well, so I do my best.
Well, it'll get cleaned up. So you did state that if, in the event it was damaged or totaled, that it would have to be rebuilt to the exact same floor plan and/or size?
Yeah, footprint is the word that I would use. I mean, they could certainly probably go higher, but we certainly wouldn't want to go any larger. Yep.
So they don't need any of the setbacks?
No.
At all?
No.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Glamire?
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant. Does applicant wish to address council?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Kent Lindell with Colorado Land Company. Thank you, council members, for hearing what I have to say tonight. This is truly an unusual situation. I've been in real estate, never seen anything quite like this before. It's one of these things where even the current owner wasn't aware of what he had until we got the 912 West Bijou under contract. And at that point, we started to see that we did have a unique situation on our hands. But I do want to say thank you to Planning and Zoning and to Steve and to Brenda for all their input and help on this and guidance on this because it could have really been a sticky situation and just difficult the whole way, but I felt like everybody did such a great job in helping this situation to be resolved. Any questions at all?
No questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kent. Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this issue? There's no public comments or anybody wishes to speak on this issue? I'd ask the city clerk if there's been any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this. Now proceed to the council discussion. Are there any questions from the council or any decision, discussion? If there is no further discussion by council, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Council action. Mr. Myers.
All right. So there's seven criteria for council to consider in making this decision. If you feel those criteria, as far as they're applicable, have been met, then you should approve. If you feel that they have not, you should deny. Certainly you can add those conditions that you feel appropriate, two of which have been provided as a recommendation.
I would entertain a resolution for the variance.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution recommending approval of case number nineteen-dash-zero-zero-two VA for 912 West Bijou Avenue for a variance to allow for lesser setbacks and minimum lot areas that are required by the code for this zoning district. With, hold on.
Okay.
With the following conditions, that the variance runs in perpetuity with the land and lots in question, that any structures rebuilt in the future would need to be reconstructed in the exact footprint as they currently exist according to the improvement location certificate. And in addition, per Section twenty-three-dash-one-fifty-A three, unless otherwise stated in the board minutes, all variances must be implemented within six months from the date such variance is granted.
Second. Good timing. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Clint. Next is a presentation on bids for a sewer jet truck for the wastewater collection department.
Hello.
Mr. Sagel.
I'm gonna fill in for Eric tonight. He's doing some of the training that the chief was talking about tonight. He said they had hazmat training, so I told him I'd cover for him. We put in the budget last year to purchase a jetter truck for the collections department. And for those of you that have seen our big red truck, as we call it, in the sewer department, just as a point of clarification, that is a VAC truck and a jetter truck, all in one unit. We felt with the age on that combined unit and starting to have some major mechanical problems with it that we needed to start looking at some type of replacement. And so we started putting some money aside a couple of years ago to make sure that we had enough in the budget for it. They started looking at some different types of units last year and we kind of figured out that the VAC part of that big red truck wasn't the part that we used the most. It's the jetter part that we use real heavily. And so the department looked into the possibility of just buying a jetter truck unit. These are smaller, more contained, self-contained parts that aren't hanging out in the weather. You know, when the guys are doing work this time of the year, we try to minimize the amount of work that they're doing in the cold with running water through all this. When it gets below freezing, can cause problems. And so they went ahead and went out to bid on one of these units. We did have several companies that responded. We had one that was below the budgeted amount and the department felt that that one met the requirements. The department was able to test one of these rigs out for, I think they let us have it for five working days last year, just so we could see if it was what we were indeed looking for. And so this is very similar to the one that they actually tested. And so they feel that it would be a good fit for the department. So I'm here requesting permission. I did bring a picture of it, if anybody's into.
You should send it around.
This one will be white. It won't be red, so, as long as you prove it. So anyhow, but I'm just looking for permission tonight to go ahead and accept the bid for the truck. We're asking for approval tonight for your permission not to exceed $250,000 for this line item, which will include the $240,330 for the truck and then $9,670 for the accessories that we'll put on it, the different decals, the lights, and some of the other different hand tools that we will purchase to go with the truck. Any questions?
Apparently they only make these in Commerce City?
So what's that?
That apparently they only make these in Commerce City?
Yeah. That's just where you find all your local, that equipment of that type coming out of, yeah, so.
Wow. Well, I love that your team was able to test it out for five days, so I like that and I like that it was under budget.
Yes.
So are they gonna maintain or keep the VAC truck?
Yeah, we'll keep the VAC truck. And so, and we're hoping that we can utilize that more with some of the storm sewer as we get more into this storm sewer discussion and making it into a full utility. The sewer department realizes that that's been kind of the direction that some of this conversation is going, is that more of the storm sewer stuff is probably gonna fall on the collections department. And so we're hoping that we can keep that red truck around for a while and still be able to utilize it then for the VAC part that we use in the sanitary system, but then use it more for the VAC part because a lot of times that's where it gets used heavily is in the storm sewer part of it when JW needs assistance in that department. And so, yes, we're looking at keeping both of them, so.
So are you finding our collection system with the maintenance that we've done over the years, you're finding less and less need to VAC out all the?
Yeah, we're finding less need to do the VAC portion of it, but definitely the jetting portion of it's still in high demand. We have a lot of high grease areas, plain and simple, that we try as much as we can to do the grease treatments in those lines, but when it comes down to it, the best way to get it loose and to keep there from being potential backups is just to go ahead and blast it out there and send it down. Unfortunately, it then ends up with Skip and he has to pull it out, but at least it's down into the size of the line and can be handled down there at his location, so.
Yep. He does have oil and grease requirement on his permit, so.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? And the ninety-six, ninety-seven hundred dollars is for?
Just, yeah, different, yeah, different types of nozzles for the equipment and then we'll get the, they'll put the different lights, light packages on it that we do on the vehicles that are sitting out in the roadways and stuff like that. And so Eric thought that would be enough to cover those accessories.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Nation?
I have a question for Jason. For the resolution, do we need to, can we package it all just in not to exceed $250,000 or do we need to read the line for the accessories for that $9,670?
I think you can do the total amount is fine.
Cool. Thanks. Thanks.
Thanks for the picture.
Yes.
It is beautiful.
And a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Coibrothers Company Incorporated for the Superjet sixteen-twenty mounted on the Freightliner chassis to be utilized by our wastewater collection treatment, wastewater collection department, not to exceed $250,000.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brent. Next is a presentation on bids for an electronic messaging sign. Mr. Glamire.
All right. What you have in your packet here is a request to purchase two trailer-mounted variable message signs. You've seen these on the highway. We're not getting them that large, but you know, the large orange signs that you can do various messages, slow down or roadwork ahead or road closed, this type of thing. We budgeted in 2019 for, to purchase two of these. We budgeted $50,000 in the capital improvement budget. We went out to bid for these in late December so that we could have them early January. And we received three bids. We were requesting bids for a Wonko brand WVTM. I'm familiar with those. They're pretty popular machines for municipalities, but we did allow an approved equal bid submittal. And we did receive a bid from Street Smart Rental for a Vermac PCMS five forty-eight. That means nothing to you, but when I go through the specs, they're virtually identical to the Wonko WVTM. So we were pretty excited about that because the bid was very competitive, as you can see in your memo. We did ask for some options to be bid if we could afford them, telescoping out riggers. This will allow us to keep these up in the heavy winds that we see. A lot of times, some of these come, you know, without riggers, but they don't go out far enough to keep the machine from tipping over. We did ask for a radar speed monitoring unit to be mounted on these so that we could use them in situations where we might want to say, "Your speed is and please slow down." And with those units, you can get a speed classifier. You might think of these as road tubes. A lot of times in the road, we'll tell you what type of vehicle is traveling down the road. Well, they can actually do that via radar as well. And so we did ask for the option to get a speed or the traffic classifier system so we could determine what types of vehicles we might have on a road from time to time. All of those options came in well under our budget as well. The manufacturers added some additional options that they quoted. For the Vermac, they suggested a thirty-amp smart charger. They do come with solar charging systems on them, but the thirty-amp smart charger will allow us to charge these much faster in the office and then get them back out on the road quicker. And then remote operations, Nelson's gonna cringe, but these do have the ability to program from your office so that you can change the message as you need to if they're out in the field. And all of them suggested a 4G modem. Two of them would provide those for free. But I think the thing that really sold the Vermac for me is the ten-year cell plan. They have a relationship with a cellular company and they can offer a ten-year plan for free. And that value right there is $3,650 from the other two manufacturers and that's a pretty nice benefit from the Vermac folks. So I'm recommending that we would purchase two trailer-mounted variable message signs from Street Smart Rental. They're also in Commerce City, in the amount of $31,713.2. That gets us all of the options, including the one that the manufacturer recommended. And I think we're pretty excited to use these machines for our street project that's coming up. Parks can use these, special events for, you know, closure of Main Street when we do the car show or Bob Stock or some of these other things, we can set these up. And then just the PD could use the radar systems as they need to. I know they have some of those, but these would be a couple more they could use when we're not using them. So these are good machines that I think can be used by all of the departments for the most part, so. Be happy to answer any questions. I didn't bring pictures. Sorry.
That was my question. Second question. My second question is with these, and this, I'm sure Nelson will make sure this is all covered once you get these in-house, but since they're remotely accessible, is there, to your knowledge, is there a concern of some nefarious person hacking into said sign and changing it to say something?
Yeah, I think that could conceivably happen. I think happening here is probably not that real. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's possible, and I'll certainly work with IT and Nelson to do whatever we can to put some firewalls or protections in place to prevent that from happening.
In other communities where?
It has.
You know?
Yep.
It happened on Longbridge Road about election time.
Oh, okay.
Here.
Well, there you go. So I guess it is conceivable, but we'll certainly do what we can to keep that from happening on our machines, so.
Steve, I thought this was great. I had to go back, look at my stuff, but eight years ago, Roger Dahl and I were trying to find a grant for the same identical things, because we thought at the time was doing the school liaison, it'd be great to, you know, schools start, slow down, prom, stuff like that, and I think it's, I think you did good.
Thank you. Yeah. We're excited to have him.
I'm curious about the money for this. Could strictly for streets money be used for something like this? This is more general, not specific to this, but just kind of curious about the strictly for streets money.
I think that's a good question. I think it's conceivable that we could have potentially paid for these out of the $900,000 for street maintenance and repair. That's not tied to the tax that was voted in. But where this could be used by multiple departments, I think we just took it out of capital in general. You're going to see a request here soon for a mastic crack seal machine, and we're intending to pay for that out of the $900,000, because that is simply for street repair and maintenance. This can be used multiple ways.
So, okay.
So that's why we budgeted just simply in capital rather than out of the, the street repair and maintenance line item in the capital fund.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Vermac for the purchase of two Vermac PCMS 54, 548 trailer-mounted VMS units and options in an amount of $31,713.2.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Next is a presentation on bids for non-budgetary emergency expenditure for the repair of Upper Platte and Beaver Canal culvert near Optimus Park. Welcome back.
Okay, here I am. So I don't like coming to you with unbudgeted requests, but this one's kind of a little bit of an emergency. We've determined that we've got a bit of a failure happening over at, by Riverview Commons. There's a large culvert there that goes under Riverview Avenue, and over the years, the culvert terminates pretty close to the edge of the road, and over the years, the water's just been edying around. They do have some sheet piles in right there. They've since rusted, and the water's getting in behind those and starting to eddy out under the road. I don't think we're at a point now to where, you know, I'm desperate, but I need to get it fixed before the water goes back in the canal. I don't want to have any more undermining of the street infrastructure. So I contacted a couple of companies that sell product that this large. This is a multi-plate structure. They come in pieces. You bolt them together. It's a great big rector set, really, and then you just buy enough to extend it however far you need to. And so we're asking for approval tonight to buy 40 feet. We're going to do a little on one side and more on the, it'd be the southeast side is really the side that has the most concern. But we're going to extend both so we can get away from the road infrastructure. We've talked to the ditch company. They're aware that we're going to be in there working, and we'll use our on-call excavating contractors to help pay for the excavating. I think a lot of our staff will be able to come in and actually bolt this thing together once the ground's excavated out. We'll use some of their staff as well to help get plate material down and so on. I think this will go fairly quickly. Once we get the material here, there is a bit of a lead time on getting the material here. That's why we're here early this year to get this done, and hopefully we get this all done before the water goes in the canal. That canal never goes dry, so we do have the challenge of trying to get the water passed through as we're working. There just is a seep, and there's water in there, but I think we'll be able to make this work this year and get that extended, and then we'll fill the hole that's under the road, the small hole that's under there, and make sure that we get that road back into service, so. The two quotes we got are in your memo. Big R Bridge is the low bidder. They actually are the company that had the material when that was initially installed, so they know the product that's there and are familiar with this culvert, so it's nice to be able to use their resources. They came in at $26,160 for the 40 feet of material. And then I've just asked for not to exceed a $50,000. This will get our on-call contractor in there helping us dig and get the material here. So if we could just get an award tonight to extend the Upper Platte and Beaver Canal culvert for a not-to-exceed price of $50,000, that'll get everything done, I think.
Will there be closure on Riverview when we do this?
It's possible. You know, when I talked to at least one on-call contractor, we're trying to figure out if we can get in on the ditch side and not have to dig from the street side, but if we do, we'll probably have a single lane closure and, you know, flag traffic around, but we'll do everything we can to keep that road open. That's a very busy road.
Very busy.
Yeah.
Eighth Avenue will become real popular.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Glennmeyer? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Upper Platte and Beaver, um, accept the bid, excuse me, from Big R Bridge in the amount of $26,160, and approve the expenditure to hire our on-call excavating contractor to help with installation of this extension not to exceed $50,000.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Good luck.
Next is a presentation on a memorandum of understanding with Mustang Baseball and approval of in-kind services and fee waivers. Mr. Amher.
Mr. Mayor, Council, it's an exciting time of the year. It's baseball season, and we're gearing up. What we have for you tonight, what's in your packet is the MOU with Mustang Baseball. Last year, you probably recall, we rearranged the MOU, and we partnered with them and shared cost. Total services that they're asking for are around $2,800. However, they are going to reimburse us $35 per kid in the age groups that use our fields, which is about $1,600. So total in-kind services and fee waivers net down to about $1,200, which is the same as last year. Excuse me. This has been a good arrangement. Josh Langford, who's in charge of Mustang Baseball, is here tonight if you have any questions for him. But I think both parties are pretty happy with the way this is working now, and we're excited for the season, so everything went great last summer. Do you have any questions?
The MOU looks beautiful, Jason.
I think Ty changed the?
It's virtually the same. We just changed the dates.
Good job. Thanks, Ty.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, Josh.
Where you're getting excited about baseball, do you believe in Groundhog's Day then and think that spring's just around the corner?
No, I really don't. Actually, I think we're going to have a wet spring. Usually, baseball's the coldest sports season. Absolutely. I've definitely been frozen at more baseball games than I have football games, especially in Elizabeth, I think. Was it Elizabeth a couple of years ago? It was miserable. So, yeah, but I love baseball. It's exciting.
Good to see us, you know, continuing to have a good relationship with Mustang Baseball and, you know, continuing.
Well, they provide a good service for the community, a lot of opportunity for kids, and, you know, my son played for them until he got to high school, and, you know, it's been nothing but a positive influence, so.
Makes for good high school, high school teams.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Very good.
Where are we at in the process of turning that field over to the school district?
We, we are working on the, we've got all of the items negotiated with them. We're getting a final draft put together, and I'll let Jason kind of give you an update on that.
The school district sent over a contract for our view, so we're going through it with staff to make sure we're good to go with that contract, and we'll send back any red lines, and then we'll bring it back to council.
So is there anything in this agreement that might end up being a conflict with the school district down the road?
I don't believe so. All the fees that we've estimated are based more on the fields at Riverside Park. We don't include any feeds on fees for Legion because they are currently leasing it. That's where the numbers changed. If you remember, I don't know, three, four years ago, the numbers were quite larger than they are now as far as the estimated fees, and that's because the older age groups are at Legion. The younger kids are mostly at Riverview or Riverside, and so that's where that number has changed. I don't see why this would create any conflicts with the arrangement.
Ultimately, Mustang would have to get a hold of the school district at that point and make an arrangement for Legion Field, which is more or less what they do now.
Yeah, I just didn't want them to have a conflict with the school district. Well, the city said we could use it, and then the school district said, well, that was when it was owned, that was when it was owned by the city.
Yeah. Josh may be able to answer that, but it sounds like they've already got a deal for Legion Field with the school district, so.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're thinking about the transition there.
Quick question, though.
I would say that the actual agreement, I believe Mustang Baseball has moved from 304 Cheyenne and needs to be Apache Street.
23 Apache.
We had that problem last year, didn't we?
Something like that, but, yeah.
Okay.
I don't recall you as being a neighbor anymore on that side, so. There any, any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer, recommend approval for the 2019 MOU between the City of Fort Morgan and the Mustang Baseball.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Ty. Thanks, Josh.
You know, I'd just like to add too, you've enjoyed working with Ty, and also Doug does a great job with his staff down there at Riverside Park, and we appreciate everything you guys do.
Thanks, Josh.
Good.
Sure.
Next is a presentation on the first reading of an ordinance, 1224, establishing zoning for the Phoebig property, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for February 19th. Mr. Glennmeyer.
All right, getting tired of seeing me yet?
It's time to show.
Well, the last time tonight, but this in your packet is for consideration to establish zoning on the Phoebig Farms property that we've purchased and annexed into the city and are working to subdivide. This is kind of the first step in that zoning process. We have three parcels there. Staff has looked at that as the applicant, and we are recommending general business B2 zoning for the parcel that's immediately adjacent to the Center Point Plaza subdivision, and then industrial for the other two parcels that are both pretty much surrounded by industrial. One is just to the west of the industrial park, and the other one is south of the industrial park. Those are the other two parcels. We think that fits the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the characters of the neighborhood there, so. Staff did take this to the Planning Commission at their regular meeting on January 14th, and the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend to the city council approval of this case, and so we've prepared the ordinance for you tonight. We'll have a public hearing before you all at the meeting on February 19th, and so we would recommend approval on first reading of this ordinance that's in your packet. Be happy to answer any questions.
The, I think when we had talked about those parcels, part of those were, we had looked at for multifamily housing.
Yeah.
Under B2, those are special?
They'd be a special use permit. We actually have one of those future parcels slated for a development, a business, and it actually fits better in the B2 than it would in the B1, so we know we've got somebody looking at one of those lots, so we want to make sure that we get them in if we can. I don't think there's any problems with the special use permit in the future. We've looked at other multifamily in Center Point, and we would just take them through that process. I think it's a fairly simple process, and we can sure help applicants with that if we do have multifamily applicants looking. Or we could look to potentially rezone. I think that's a little more of a challenge. I'd rather just take them through the special use permit, but I think it's, you know, as fairly simple as that process is, I think we'd have good success with that in the future, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain action.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution accepting the first reading of ordinance 1224, establishing zoning for the Phoebig Farm property, and request to schedule a public hearing on this ordinance for February 19th.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all. I'm done.
Thanks, Steve. See you the 19th.
Probably before that.
Next on the agenda is public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda. Anybody wish to address counsel for something not on the agenda? Seeing none?
You can talk to us.
Welcome, Jerry.
Jerry's always welcome to come talk.
I know that I'm not supposed to do this because it was on the agenda, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank the city council for a vote for my reappointment to the Fort Morgan Senior Center Advisory Board. I have been an advocate for the aging population, not only from Fort Morgan or Morgan County, but for the state of Colorado, and I am very interested in what's coming up before the Colorado legislature, which is zero. And I'm still waiting to see what bills are going to come up, if any, because if there will be some, I'm going to be there, and I will read them. I'm not going to make, not going to make a decision on a bill just because I don't like the title. I want to read it first, and pencil questions, and ideas, and suggestions, and that brings me to my topic, why I'm here. In 2017, I appeared before you, and I don't remember when, but I suggested you have some type, at that time, quote, a black party, not necessarily a black party, but kind of a town meeting in your own wards, to listen to the people for their ideas, suggestions, their criticism in church. We have joys and concerns. At the meal site, we have joys, concerns, ideas, suggestions, and complaints. The last city council meeting that I was at, there were several citizens got up and said, "We live in a divided city." Well, we do. I have had the opportunity in the past several decades to come before the city council I have had the opportunity in the past several decades to come before the city council and not understand a few things, talk one-on-one to councilmen, people, some of them like Sue Spencer, Alberta Simmons, Lynn Deal, Jim Powers, and many mayors and many other councilmen of the wards. So I'm going to give you a suggestion tonight. Why not have a town meeting, there's two wards or two people in each ward? You may not get very many people, but you need to have the one-on-one conversation. I remember one year I talked with Alberta Simmons. I don't even remember the issue. But she, let me put it this way, she straightened me out on a lot of things on this particular issue. I don't even remember what it was. But when you talk one-on-one with your constituents, you will get more done than you do if you don't. This is important. Right now, I am seen at the legislature and believe me, I'm really hot and heavy. They're not listening to the people on many of the bills that I have been following. Don't do this to the people of Fort Morgan. You can do it. You have the knowledge and the places. Every one of you work. Okay, why not have it on a Saturday or even on a Sunday afternoon? But you need to listen to the people. I don't like telephoning councilmen or the mayors or whatever. I'd rather talk with them one-on-one. But that's me. I get more information out of that. I am hoping that at some point you will have something. You don't have to have every time there's a councilman, you don't have to have one. You can have just whenever you want to do it. But listen to the ideas, the people, the suggestions, the criticisms, and you're going to be a better council in the long run. Because we have a November election coming up. I know who's up for reelection. I haven't been in politics for six decades for nothing. And I am hoping that whether there's a handful or a lot of people, listen to them, get their ideas, you will be better off in the long run. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anybody else wish to address council? Reports by officials and staff.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things. The, wanted to point out that we have the best internet service, I think, anywhere. Had a lot of people come and visit, family visit this weekend from all over the place, different states, different communities. And I think there were more devices in my house than there were people on the internet and never had a single issue. And so I just want to, again, thank city council's support of our internet project, the city staff for working with our private partner to get that done and for ALO, what we do because we truly have a great service in Fort Morgan that we should be proud of. A lot of people, I guess a lot of people at my house this weekend were just amazed that they had the service that they did and wish they had what we had. So just wanted to point that out and thank council. The other thing, when we do our retreat for the 2020 budget, we'll be looking at a plan that we've been putting together to address some of the illegal dump, well, all of the illegal dumping in the alleys. Just want to remind the citizens that if you see somebody dumping something in your alley, you have a right to go out and address it or you can call 911 and have the police go out and investigate it. But if you see something that's a little bit, doesn't seem kosher, you definitely want to make sure we're on top of that and taking care of it because ultimately, it costs the ratepayers for illegal dumping. And then really looking forward and appreciate council setting a special night to go over the complex plan. I think there's a lot of information that we have to share with the council and with public. I think there's a lot of misunderstandings about what that project really is and where it came from. And we're really looking forward to giving a historical summation of how we got where we're at and then getting direction or at least some discussion on where we need to go with that project. I think it's very important for the city facilities in the future and we're looking forward to that. Other than that, does anybody else have any? I'm seeing no, so. Does council have any questions or concerns that have been raised by citizens or issues that we can address for you?
Yeah, one of the things that I think the public might be interested is, is where are we at with the 2B committee? And just making sure that we're staying open and transparent. It's, we're a month into the year and just want to know, kind of update what the public is, where we're at with that.
Sure. I think that's a great question. I'm glad you brought it up. We've had two meetings, one with the original committee that we discussed in council. We've added a couple of committee members from the community, which I think have brought a really good perspective. And we've got a couple of things to go over with regard to what the proposals are. And I think the plan is to have that in front of council by the next meeting, the next council meeting for a review of what it is we're proposing to change within the charter to meet the election requirements voted on by the public. So we should have that back to council by the next meeting, which was the deadline that we had set to get that done. And then we anticipate, if everything goes well with that, we'll have a public hearing and second and final reading for the adoption of those changes in the charter the first week in March. So this is moving along and it's going the way I think council has directed us, well, it's going the way council's directed us to go and we're excited to get it done and move forward.
So we will get that in our Friday packet?
Yes.
Is there, is there any way we could get it earlier than the three days before the meeting? I know that's a time crunch, but if this is something that's this big an issue that citizens have entrusted us to handle, I would prefer having a week before just so that I have my time to review it and make sure that it is what it's supposed to be.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
If I'm the only one, I mean.
No, I think that's a great idea. It is important. We want to make sure that people who have to adopt the ordinance understand it. If you have any questions in the meantime, feel free to give us a call. I want to thank the mayor and Lisa for their participation in that committee. They've provided a lot of really good insight and thought process and want to thank staff that's been involved with that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And Jason for writing it.
Thanks, Clint.
Yep, I believe that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
When do we get to meet the new economic development specialist?
Hopefully at the next meeting, so.
Next is bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a lot of bids. City's accepting bids for LED light fixtures until 2:45 PM on February 6th, for electrical conductors until 2:45 PM on February 6th, for electric distribution wood poles until 2:45 PM on February 6th, census water meters until 3:00 PM on February 6th, Itron 100-watt water encoder receiver transmitters, or ERTs, until 3:00 PM on February 6th, water mainline Insta-valves until 3:00 PM on February 6th. It's going to be very crowded downstairs on February 6th. 2019 wastewater collection system relining projects until 3:00 PM on February 13th, directional boring machine until 4:00 PM on February 14th. Just one second. Fire hydrants, water valves, and pipe until 3:00 PM on February 14th, water main replacement parts until 2:45 PM on February 14th, water line isolation project until 3:00 PM on February 15th, 2019 fertilizer product and application services until 2:30 PM on February 19th, 2019 HBP paving and chip seal projects until 3:00 PM on February 27th, and 2019 on-call HBP paving services on three, until 3:00 PM on February 27th. Under meetings, the planning commission is scheduled to meet next Monday, the 11th, at 4:30 PM. The airport advisory board will meet on February 13th at noon at the airport. And the all-city offices will be closed on Monday, the 18th, for President's Day. And the next city council regular meeting will be on February 19th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
That's all you got?
That's it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an executive session.
Your Honor, before you go into that, at this time, I would like to table my request for item number 23 on the agenda, which was an executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B and for the following purpose and identification purposes, council rules of procedure.
Okay. So with that one removed, next item is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing a strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, an employment contract with chief of public safety. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We will retire to executive, the first executive session.